And welcome to the Special Board of Aldermen, which is held today, Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, at 6:30 PM via teleconference. This is Vice President Mike O'Brien will be presiding. City Clerk Susan K. Lovering will be recording. A prayer will be offered by the Clerk, Susan Lovering, with Alderman Ernest Jettie leading us in the pledge to the flag. City Clerk?
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As Acting President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to contemporaneously, love that word, to this meeting, which is authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID number is 874-2145-6400 with a passcode of 257397. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, though public postings through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the city's website at www.nashvillenewhamshire.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and at the Nashville Public Library. If anybody has a problem assessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance when each member states their presence. Please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required by the right to know law. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present. I'm alone and practicing social distancing.
Alderman Clea. Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I have this guy, so I'm not alone, but I will be. And I can hear everyone.
Alderman Karen.
I am here. I am alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I am by myself, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Tenza.
I'm present. I'm alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here. I'm alone. I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present, and I am alone in the room.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I can hear everything.
Alderman Cleaver.
Present. My daughter's in an adjacent room, and I can hear the proceedings fine.
Alderman Harry Gathroy.
I'm present. I'm alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Mulcher. You have 11 in attendance, Vice President O'Brien.
Thank you to the clerk. All the Aldermen that did not respond to the roll call have called and expressed that they are tied up at this time with proper excuse, and therefore their leave will be allowed. Several of the members will probably jump on the meeting at some point. Also in attendance is Mayor James Doncic, Corporate Counsel Stephen Bolton. And at this particular time, we're going to have a presentation this evening. But I would like to recognize Lisa Foto, Public Works Director, to discuss tonight's topic, sewer user fees, and the presentation. Director Foto, could you give us the introduction, please?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Alderman O'Brien. Good evening, Mayor Doncic, Vice President O'Brien, and members of the Board of Aldermen. For members of the public who don't know me, my name is Lisa Foto, and I serve as Director of Public Works in our city. This evening, we'll be presenting a proposed increase in sewer user fees. These increases are being driven by the operating and capital costs associated with compliance of our permits, permits that, of course, that are related to the wastewater treatment facility. I would like to thank our consultant Frank Ayotte from Hazen &amp; Sawyer, our wastewater team, Dave Boucher, Noel Osborne, and Bill Keating, our city engineer, Dan Hudson, and Carolyn O'Connor, our finance and administration manager, and of course, our CFO, John Griffin, for their efforts in putting this together. There was a lot of time and effort that has gone into this. So now I will turn this over to our consultant Frank Ayotte from Hazen &amp; Sawyer to begin the presentation. Frank?
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Ladies and gentlemen, Lisa mentioned, my name is Frank Ayotte. I'm with the engineering firm of Hazen &amp; Sawyer. We are a longtime city consultant on wastewater treatment and collection systems for the city. And one of our service offerings is rate study analyses and financial capability assessments. So with that, I'd like to kick off the presentation. So tonight's agenda, I'd like to discuss the historical rates of the city over the last 16 years. The proposed sewer rate increases from 2021 to 2023 that we analyze, what the drivers are for the required rate increases, the planned major capital investments that are part of what's driving the increases, funding strategies that's going to minimize the expenditures and rate impacts to the ratepayers. And then I'm going to offer a comparison of the Nashville sewer rates versus selected cities in New Hampshire and Massachusetts. We'll talk about the affordability of Nashville's proposed sewer rates using EPA metrics and the future strategies to mitigate future impacts of mandated capital expenditures, such as an integrated planning framework initiative, which I'm going to discuss what that's all about, and then offer some conclusions. So you see this bar graph here. This is over the last 16 years. What you can see here is the equivalent of basically a cost of living increase in the sewer rates over the last 16 years of about, I believe, about 2%. So really, nothing of a major impact in terms of funding major capital improvements. Next, I'd like to offer a comparison of Nashville's residential sewer rates.
That'd be easiest, especially because I have to keep, I think this is going to happen. I'd have to wait till the end to say anything. It's going to be way later, a Zoom meeting.
Could you, thank you.
Yeah, would you?
If everybody could please mute while not speaking, because we have a lot of interference. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Foto.
Okay, thank you. In this particular slide, I'd like to offer a comparison of Nashville's residential sewer rates with selected regional rates. And what you can see for 2020, based on the typical water consumption of 20ccf, which is 100 cubic feet, you see Nashville's quarterly bill as it compares to Manchester, Concord, Keene, Portsmouth, and some selected Lowell, Massachusetts, is really on the bottom in comparison to all these cities and towns with respect to your current rates. And even the 2018 Nashville State Average Quarterly Bill is significantly higher. With respect to the proposed sewer increases from 21 to 23, at this time, a 20% increase in sewer user fees in 2021 is being recommended, followed by a 15% increase in 2022 and no increase in 2023. And as you can see here, even in 2021 to 2023, that line here in the middle that's bolded out, $94.97, and then in 2023, 2022, which there's no increase in 2023, it's 109.22. If we go back to the previous slide, 109.22 is still relatively cheaper than Keene, Portsmouth, and some of the other cities and towns. And that doesn't take into account what any future increases Manchester might be looking at, its ratepayers in those future years. So how is this considered from an affordability perspective? Well, the EPA does have an affordability metric, and it uses 2% of the household income as the threshold for what's considered a sewer bill affordability. And what we did was, we analyzed the household income based in quintiles of all your residents in that regard. And notice on the 20th percentile, which is your lowest income residence, even in the years 2022 and 2023, as a percent of household income at 1.4%, it's still well below the 2% metric that the EPA considers affordable. So what are the primary drivers of the required increase? Well, it is to fund the annual debt service, which is projected to increase from 5.1 million in 2020 to 8.4 million in 2025, which is about a 10% average annual increase, and as well as annual operating maintenance expenditures, which are increased at a modest rate of 3%. I got to note here that when we did this analysis, Nashville does an extremely good job of keeping a lid on annual O&amp;M expenditures. Some would consider 3% almost a cost of living increase in that sense. So very well done there. And where is your source of revenue coming from? Well, 94% of the wastewater revenues are really derived from the user fees, and only a small amount is collected from the permit fees. So it's really the user rates that is the lion's share of your revenues. So what are the major capital expenditures that these rates will be funding? Well, there's up to $52 million in upcoming capital investments required from 2020 to 2025. And a lot of this is age of equipment, as well as EPA mandated type projects. Pump station rehabilitation at 10.8 million. A CMOM plan, which stands for capacity management, operation, and maintenance of your collection system. It's a collection system plan that allows you to clean all your collection system pipes, the main interceptors, assess the condition of those pipes, and whether or not they need to be lined or even replaced, depending on the overall condition. And then the sewer infrastructure program, 30 million over six years, is really to fix those pipes. There's wastewater treatment, primary tank upgrades at 3.9 million, phosphorus removal and storage facility at about a million, and the booster pump stations for wastewater, just under a million. So what funding strategies is Nashville employing to minimize these ratepayer impacts? Well, you're taking advantage of all the state SRF loans at low interest rates. I must note that the CMOM program of pump stations are financed through SRF and other projects financed through a mixture of bond issuances and SRF financing. Smaller projects are funded through cash, were practical, and maintaining equipment cash reserves to reduce year-to-year impacts. The operation and maintenance costs, again, keeping an annual lid about 3% increase per year, is almost a cost of inflation. So at the beginning of the presentation, I talked about an integrated planning framework to reduce future costs. So what is that? Nashville is currently developing this type of framework, and it is sanctioned by the U.S. EPA. And it allows the city itself to prioritize its capital projects that best address the most pressing needs of the community. So you get the most bang for the buck based on the urgency of the projects that you see and the order that you see it. And the EPA allows that. So what that does, it allows you to defer capital projects that confer fewer benefits in the future and really allow you to put the most pressing ones that have the highest impacts up front. It also allows you to smooth the cost curve. So you're not doing everything all at once. What that in turn allows you to do is create a future rate increases at a gradual increase versus, as I presented earlier in the presentation, you had only first 16 years, almost a 2% rate of inflation increase. And now you're looking at a 20% increase and a 15% increase in 2021 and 2022. In the future, under an IPF, you may be able to, say, increase rates at a cost of, say, 5% on an annual basis, and therefore reducing any spikes that you might see otherwise. So in conclusion, planned rate increases are covering the cost to finance the capital investments that are required to comply with regulatory mandates and provide that high level of service to its city and its ratepayers. Despite the increases, Nashville sewer charges in 2023 will still be lower than its peer utility charges in 2020, as well as the 2018 state average. The rates themselves, well, still be, based on our analysis, will still be considered affordable, even in the lowest quintile household income bracket, based on the EPA's 2% affordability metric. And the development of the Integrated Planning Framework and Hazen is also helping the city with developing a dynamic rate model will further reduce the impacts required for capital investments. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that I may be able to answer for you folks. You're on mute.
Thank you. Mr. Ayotte, I was going to, and thank you for reminding me I was on mute. Can you take down the presentation screen? And we could bring it back up if somebody has a question that you could refer to. That way, I could see the full room and recognize people for their questions. So at this particular time, I'll open up for questions by members of the board. Do I see any hands? Any questions? Alderman Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ayotte, I heard a lot of data, but could you just give me a sense of what's a little bit of a sense of what's driving the cost increase? If you could just break it down into something a little...
Sure. It's mostly the existing debt service and the funding of major capital improvements over the next five years, 52 million in effect. And your debt service is basically like loans that you take out to fund these projects over time, much like we all take out a car loan, per se, as well as the increase in the funding of annual operation and maintenance costs of your treatment plant, you know, and pump stations. And that is really at a modest rate of 3% per year. Nashville's done a good job at that. The major capital expenditures, some of which are EPA mandated, and some of which are just based on replacing equipment that's at the end of its useful life. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Could I just ask a follow-up question? Would you say, so have there been deferred capital improvements that now just need to be done?
Well, I don't know if deferred is the right term. I think with respect to equipment replacement, that equipment has a useful life. So for the 52 million that I'm talking about here, the particular equipment replacement involves pump stations that are at its useful life, the wastewater plant booster stations, also wastewater treatment primary tank upgrades. So that's just a few of the major pieces of equipment that need upgrade. There'll be others, but those others will happen in the future because those pieces of equipment are not at their useful life yet. So it's an ongoing cycle. In what's considered useful life, it can be anywhere between 20 to 30 years of some of this equipment, existing equipment in service.
And is much of the increase due to regulatory changes that were...?
Some of the increases is due to regulatory changes. So I'll give you an example. The CMOM plan is part of a future regulatory requirement as part of your NPDES permit, which is your discharge permit to discharge your wastewater effluent into the Nashville River. And what that is, is it is a, I mentioned this in the presentation, it's a capacity management, operation, and maintenance plan for your correct collection system. And that requires you to essentially clean and inspect your collection system. And part of that plan analyzes whether or not the pipes are cracked or whether or not you have any blockages or cavins or there's an impending failure. So it will actually fund the sewer infrastructure program improvements, which is 30 million over the next six years to either replace pipes that are completely defective or those with mild defects be able to line those pipes without replacing them, which is a cost savings.
Frank, can I just correct one thing? The release is to the Merrimack River, not the Nashville.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
I just wanted to correct that.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Ms. Ayotte.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yeah. Any other questions? Yes, Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to ask if we could get copies of this, please, your presentation? Could you include a description of the acronym that you're using?
Yeah, sure.
Director Foto saying yes, and I think copies would be...
Thank you.
And the other questions by members of the board? Seeing none. Director Foto, being your liaison and at one of the Public Works meetings, explained how the lining of the pipe is actually saving us a lot of money as compared to digging that type of pipe up and replacing that particular piece of infrastructure, and it's a good way to go to the taxpayers. Can you explain that, please?
I absolutely can, but I have somebody on this call that can do that even better, our city engineer, Dan Hudson. So I will let him. But that is a very good point, and that is part of our CMOM plan as well, Alderman O'Brien. So Dan, would you like to?
Sure. I'd be happy to. Yeah, I'd be happy to. It was explained pretty well, but we're doing a pretty extensive program right now. We're video inspecting pipes. Some of these sewer pipes are 100 years old or more. Some haven't been looked at, and maybe the whole time or at least a long time. As part of the inspection, we're cleaning them. As we do that, so that gets us back capacity in our system, removing sediments and different things. But the thing that we're trying to do is catch pipes before they fall into a more costly repair category. If we can find a pipe and put a liner inside of it and repair it to address cracking or whatever issues it has, that's about 10 to 20 times cheaper than having to dig that pipe up and do a full replacement. And of course, digging up the sewer mains, some of them are 20 feet deep. That's a very disruptive process and impacts a lot of people and utilities and things. So we find that it's great value in what we're doing with this program. We're doing the CCTV and as much as possible doing the lining.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. And can the clerk record that we are now joined by Alderman Dowd at the proper time, please? Thank you. Any other questions by members of the board? Seeing none. I thank you, Mr. Ayotte, for your facts and your charts and your presentation. Director Foto, it's always good to see you, and thank you as well for your presentation with your team and everything. See you. No more questions. I'll turn to Alderman Schmidt for the proper motion to adjourn by roll call. Alderman Schmidt, please.
Thank you. I move that the meeting be declared adjourned at whatever time we have by roll call.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Woman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathroy.
Yes.
You have 12 As and 0As.
Thank you. Motion passes, and I'll declare the meeting adjourned at 6:59. As part of the public service announcement to our constituents, the Board of Alderman will reconvene for the regular Board of Alderman meeting this evening at 7:30, so the whole cast of characters will be back at that particular time. So right now, we'll take a little break, and looking forward to seeing everybody at 7:30. See you then, folks.